Okay, we gotta work some now. I'll come by during the week and we'll practice. I'll look at you, you look at me. Okay, like to call the Thursday, September fourteenth, city council, Lake Forest Park work session order. At this time, do your adoption agenda.
Second.
Move to second, I'll say hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much, and we move right on to Matt, who's here to update us from. Update from the municipal services department, records management in the city. Welcome, Matt.
Hi, hi, everybody. Try and make this short and sweet, and hopefully it'll answer any questions that come up. So first off, there's my department. Hey, is anybody wants to know who works for me? Uh, Joanne or Deputy City clerk, Caroline, our records management specialist. Jessica Alterman, the receptionist, and then we have three passport clerks. Shannon works our regular hours. Mondays, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, and the other two rotate on Saturdays. You're technically down one rotation, so that might come up later in the presentation. Historically, here's where we are passport revenues. Twenty twenty-two is where I started about halfway through twenty twenty-two, we started in the. Setting the point in times, the fifteen minutes each, and that seemed to raise our revenues. Right now, we're at thirty. About one hundred and nineteen thousand, probably over that right now, since it's only up to August. There's a breakdown from our passports and then between our passports and our photos. We did raise a photo this year, twenty dollars, I think it was fifteen. From last year, so that helps with our revenues a little bit. So this slide is kind of depressing me a little bit. You'll notice on. First quarter, everything revenue seemed to be going up from last year. And then in May, June, July, August, they seem to be going down this year. I think part of this is. Sort of the negative press that's out there about how long it takes to get a passport. Because what's happening is people are booking appointments, so we get a full schedule that's booked up. But then they don't show up for their appointments, so then it's lost revenue for us. We don't actually gain anything. We just have to sit there until the next point. So I think that's the problem. Hoping that September will be a bit better, since the negative news seems to have died down a little bit, but. I think we're gonna have to be more aggressive about how we reach out to our. People that book appointments, kind of be more proactive and like confirm that you actually are showing up instead of. So if you don't show up, we can actually open it up, because if we open it up even on the same day, it will get filled up by something. Because we have constantly people wanting a passport. So I'm hoping that September will rebound and be higher revenues. So.
It sounds like we don't currently have like a day before check-in or anything process for.
Uh, we send out, we send out reminders to them, I think a week before their appointments. And just to remind them, like, here's a form, make sure you fill it out, make sure you're available.
I know, I think I got from the day before too.
Awesome. Yeah, I know sometimes you have to like, if it's a text, like response C to confirm, so you actually have to make, you know that they got it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I have to look at our system, where our system works, and whether or not we actually do that. Yeah. Have you gone back to just a walk-in model or a hybrid walk-in and appointments? That is pretty bad, because when I was just walking before, it would, they would be here all night. Sometimes, I mean, we could like book out enough appointment slots or enough. Time for each one, so we basically just have everybody waiting there, and they've been waiting for two hours. It's insane. It was kind of a nightmare Monday here.
Well, operationally, it was, it was on the same ass, because we are so small in proximity to like Jeff's office and the recording. In no ways the, uh, A Harrison attended the turn into, it was very distracted, and it got away in the public. You know, we're trying to do business at the building park, so it's not been much of that operation.
So I just think that if we can. Get more proactive on the appointments to make sure that everybody's keeping them, I think we can keep the revenues up and raise it back up where it should be, where it looks like it was stretching for a third year.
Uh, there's a quick question before you go on that. Are we getting all the appointments filled, or is sort of the marketing of our, of our service? Could that use any?
Oh, no, we're, we're getting them filled, and then we open them up, but it's usually filled within two days, so we were booked out. Usually two months in advance, so we open them up on the twenty-fourth of the month. So we're booked up through October, well, uh, November at the end of this month.
Actually, we're running into a lot. I think there's a lot going on in people's minds nowadays, because people are more, like, three, four months ahead now. My dentist, you know, he calls you every twenty minutes.
Um, so I wanna break down. Break down how much the passport third costs versus the revenues. In an ideal world. This is what their salary for, for a passport third would be, this ideal, what they would earn. And this would be the different, so this is our, like. Fair that they did eighty per day, this is how much revenue we could get, if they did eighty per day. They don't do any. Eighty per day, it's just not realistic. So this, this over here is the actual averages, this is from Shannon, this is how much. We paid, and so much she did with a three-month average, and this is for last year, and so this is the revenue that she made just by herself last year. All right, brought that up just to maybe in the future, if you want to be expanded.
About possibility that her, 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 having a traditional basis of Shannon's here, you know, so offsetting, but she's here, because it's easy to save. And more than pays for itself, you have such a backlog, there's, there's a demand for it.
And last year, we did a kind of a survey, we ran for, I think, three months. But everybody that came in, and a lot of the. Survey results came in that they would rather see, because our password hours are from twelve to four. A lot of them wanted Mondays from nine to nine. So I'm thinking if we wanted to expand it, I would expand it on Monday, nine, then the mornings, so just have it in the morning, so then they just switch out. So we'd actually have a full day on Monday, Thursday, Fridays, Saturdays. So if you're over three thousand in a year, is that all LP, or are we getting people from other cities to come? Oh, no, that's all other cities. I mean, that's, that's, I would say. Oh, probably less than a quarter is from LP. Do, do other cities not do? Oh, yeah.
I think it's the bait time, when, at least as a personal experience, if I'm calling to make an appointment. Everyone's booked up, and you need it, some people need it sooner.
I think Littleville just started doing a great. I know, Joanne was telling me the other day, that's, I forget, or once you were five ways away, they, they, they're driving an hour away to try to get a passport in the city, so.
City of Little Creek, I think they still do that.
Yeah, I know, Great Window. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Oh, yeah, just really briefly, um, it'd be interesting, sorry, it'd be interesting to understand kind of how that revenue. Looks compared to like kind of the overhead cost of this particular department, just kind of to see. To see kind of what that, the true net is, or if, if we don't consider that when we're doing this, I think that's just, you know, because. They're taking over space that can't be used for other things, you know, while they're here, so I don't know if that's something that you guys were thinking about when you're putting these numbers together.
No, I mean, we shifted models since COVID, and we've made it worse such that we honestly, where. Shannon's setting up shop is where we had our probation officer before, you know, as an, the new probation officer uses a different spot of her PD. So we always had that allocated, and we got space, um, instead of our plate or script for the years for me. So I'm sure there's a new job allocation with overhead.
Okay, no, that's good to know.
Lights are on anyway.
Exactly, yeah.
We're covering the cost of taking photos, you know, the, the, the paper and the printer and the light, everything, the, the cameras, that's all wrapped.
It's all covered by that piece.
And one last, one last thought, Matt, it would be interesting to know what proportion of the folks that are coming are families with children. So that you can think about, you know, out of school hours versus, you know, adult support, you know, at different times.
Yeah, um, most of the families actually book out on Saturdays, so that's the majority of them. Usually, if they're really desperate, they'll come in after school, which usually goes out around three, I think.
So, so you think we're accommodating the families?
I think we're pretty accommodating for families, yeah.
Good thing.
But we're, we're running six hours on Saturday, usually three hours a day. So that doesn't seem to be, I haven't gotten any complaints, I should say.
Okay.
Good. The world of records management. Okay, um, so this is the breakdown of the last five years of record requests. Keep in mind that these are PD and regular record requests. So the majority of these are PD requests. Problem is that the staff time is actually, most of it is actually on the regular request. So PDs kind of block load. Problem was also is that. Twenty twenty-two is when I started, so I actually started actually tracking the time accurately, so down here, it wasn't being tracked accurately. So that's why there's a big difference in here. So it is important to recognize that this, right here, this is a lot of hours in twenty twenty-two. I'll explain why on the next one.
Just a clarification, but twenty twenty-three is that through August, through July, through August.
So we spent almost four hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two on record requests. Now, keep in mind, that's basically. All, every staff person that, it's a portion of everybody's staff time that touched the records. So it's not just our record specialist, it's Phil, it's Jeff, it's Andy, it's who I would have touched it. And on top of that, we also have legal fees. This, this number is so high, it's because of really about three requests. Unfortunately, so it's not like every request that we have. Right now, I think we're probably not even gonna touch this number this year. So we aren't.
Just quickly to that point, there was one request right in the chat when they had the video over two thousand emails. Yeah, so you can see if there was something responsive or something that should be reacted. Um, there's a silver ball, and it gives time on, because they're staff, that's a, it's quite elaborate request.
And it gets compounded, because then when you're reviewing it, and then you have to send it in review, so it's actually getting renewed like three times. But just, timing gets compounded constantly, and record requests. But there's not much we can do. You can't charge staff time for record requests, unfortunately. Uh, we can charge what we use to respond to record requests, it's actually, we could actually charge the electricity in the computers. Everything that we use to answer record requests, unfortunately. That's a little bit burdensome, because lights are already on anyway, so how are we gonna light it up between individual. Computers, individual people, that kind of thing. And right now, we're charging only eleven cents for record requests, most part, everybody's paying, paying it, I haven't heard any complaints, heard a couple. People complaining, um, it's mostly the businesses, because they don't want to write the warrant, send a check, and like, some of them want to put. Deposits down, because they put in so many record requests.
So staff time includes our, our legal staff, outside staff as well?
Unfortunately, um, we could theoretically charge if we used another outside attorney. It'd probably argue that those costs, we're not charging.
Not already a contracted attorney that we have, a bartender.
It's not a. Plus, a city official.
A city official, okay.
Matt, can you tell us why eleven cents?
It's the actual, you know, it's actually ten cents, the eleven cents is, it's a penny for the technology fee. Uh, the ten cents actually comes from the, um, the statutes. Um, it's just a basic fee, it's actually the charge, I should say, ten cents is for, everything's done by email, so it's actually ten cents for using. A certain, or to the post of the document, so we can download. So if I came in, just copy, it would actually be fifteen cents, but I can't remember the last time I actually made copies. Uh, so I recently interacted with Seattle doing a public records request, and they do charge for staff time. Uh, they charge forty-one cents per minute for staff time. Or at least, as it's a charge per minute of staff time to attach records to a response, at a minimum of two minutes, so eighty-two cents. That's news to me. A lot of the jurisdictions around here, especially cities, are, so I learn to do that. So that's news to me.
What kind of request? Is that for all requests? Is that E D? I mean, like.
Um, not, I don't know if this is included, but that's just sort of a general request, like the one I made was to their transportation division.
We've explored this with you. That would be, we'll have to ask you that question.
Yeah, it's, there's a gray area there.
I imagine they're doing the thing of, this is their percentage of the programs, electricities, and that's how they're determining that, is what I'm guessing, it's not necessarily staff time, but it's the resources. That is happening during the staff time, that's my gut feeling.
Yeah, so.
I mean, you have to look at this.
The website literally says staff time.
I, but.
It involves a cost study about breakdowns. Um, so in order to kind of try to minimize the, things, I created a record management team, Caroline, Joanne. I have Aaron on there, because he's the IT manager and best, uh, from finance. Um, so we're looking at, we're using a lot less legal fees than we have in the past. Granted, we have a large complicated record request. Hopefully not this feature. Those fees could go up. We're gonna try and standardize all the records in the city. Already completed the records management policy, just need to implement it with staff and everybody to make sure that they're following it. Um, we started working on getting some of the plans. Scans, so everything can be digital and actually create some less space. And we're gonna start auditing everything to make sure that everybody get rid of all the extra copies that we have out there, because a lot of people. Wanted of scanning it and then still keeping a paper copy for some unknown reason. Or they make multiple copies in the same document, which just causes problems down there. And gonna try and put more documents on the website, like right now, we just, this week, put up the sites we're as built, which was probably. The quarter or a third of the records request that came in, the first site square has built, we just put those up, so hopefully that'll leave a lot of requests.
Let's know, let's know what that is.
Oh, you do, yeah.
So we're going from your house up to our line of approach.
Okay. Yes, I'm right. The, the, the scanning goes on to a server that has the backups, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, everything, if it gets scanned, it'll get back to probably like three times. And right now, we're running out of space, both physically and virtually. So we need, might have to look at expanding one or the other, um, hopefully, we don't have to expand anything, but gonna try to avoid that as much as else. Hopefully, if we get an index somewhere, it'll reduce staff time on record requests. Make more records available online. Reduce the cost, reduce the number of requests, because people, more self-service. Maybe in the future, we might look at trying to use more, go to more electronic signature, because instead of physical signature paper. Because I think we're still scanning stuff, and then we're still holding on to the hard copies. Which doesn't make a whole sense to me, stopping copies. Rich Finance was here. Lindsay was here. Um, so right now, we're looking at grants, um, I applied for a grant this year for scanning, didn't get it. Was told, basically, from the state archives, that whatever applies, they basically, not a lot of people apply. Well, this year, a hundred and twenty people applied, a hundred and twenty. So they shortened the timeframe, it used to be applied for in August. You know. So now they're opening it up in February. I'm, want to apply for public records request software to make it more self-service, and maybe we can try and offset that by bringing the cost into the. Records request, so we can actually charge money, and so we can hopefully keep it solid, where, where we don't have to pay for it every year, but it'll be even keel across the board. I think that would be a, a great benefit overall.
Okay, so I'm a couple of minutes, because I, he has my stock, I know HR is pretty simple. So, um, we could give her some time to do everything.
A quick question, if we had dedicated public record request software, that, then that cost can be part of the fee, because it's a dedicated software to track.
See, can I? You mentioned virtual space, does that mean that you just leave your server or just? Uh, it would be server space, it would be built, building a bigger server or purchasing a power server somewhere. It's also possible. We went to the virtual server on this end, so.
Do you know, when you would know if you got the grant, uh, when you like that during?
Think they, I think the timeframe was made.
Okay, thank you, Matt, you did a great job. Um, quick, real quick, can you, is, uh, is it okay to get a public information request on people that ask the public information request?
Sure.
Would you say yes?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a, I mean, public records request.
Public record.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, from there, we're gonna move on to Darren, I stopped by our, I mean, he's like that, by her office the other day, and I ended up getting a pillow and a sleeping bag, and. I think he got that around three thirty in the morning.
Yeah, well, I won't be able to get into all that here today, so it'll be hopefully ten minutes, right?
Oh, yeah.
So I just thought I would highlight, even though I, I think the site was a quarter, do the HR report for the quarter. I've been here officially a year, so I thought, well, let me look back at the year and talk about some of the things that have been going on. Open enrollment is coming up, last year, that went pretty smoothly, there's always a little bit of, uh. Frustration on the administrative side with our, our carrier for our FSA, HSA, HRA, so Jim heads up. Kind of looking into other vendor reps for that, but employees, they don't know that, so that's great. And then this year, for open enrollment, in preparation for that, I'm working on putting together a benefit fair. And bringing in our reps to talk about any questions that our staff have to understand their benefits better, um, including retirement as well. And then what I'm hoping is I can also have a wellness and health aspect to that, and have reached out to some of our local businesses, like twenty-four. Our fitness or planet fitness to be over there, uh, to see if there might be a desire to be a part of it as well, and have that focus for employees. So I'm targeting that for, uh, early November, and then to follow that would be open enrollment. The desire is that just overall, people will understand what their benefits are further, and I think hopefully with that education on the retirement side as well. Encouraging people to, to put into their retirement, especially when we have the ability, uh, on our police side, to retire at fifty-three. Making sure they understand, uh, all of the components with that, so they can retire at fifty-three if they want to. So that, that will be in, uh, November. In addition, I have been trying to put together these luncheon learns, so for example, brought in the. Employee Assistance Program rep to come in and meet, if people wanted to, uh, around that lunchtime hour, to talk about what the AP is. And what those benefits are, and also, uh, scheduling a time that works for the police officers to accommodate their schedule. And then had the representative from DRS Department of Retirement Systems come in and talk to our person employees and our lab employees. And invite, it was extended to other agencies, that they wanted any of their employees to be able to attend, they were welcome to share the information. Little things like the pumpkin carving contest in the fall, trying to have some of those fun activities. Uh, and then the employee holiday luncheon at the end of the year for staff. People seem to really enjoy that, so try to put that on the calendar again this year. And then for future luncheon learns, it would also be things that are focused on the, not just the financial aspect, but, you know, aging. Parents, for example, and taking care of them, or looking at other family personal items, as well as the health and wellness and. Uh, financial wellness side of it, so that's what that's kind of focused on there, I don't know if you have any questions around that. So there's so many different ways to, I think, incorporate a lot of the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging aspects within the workforce. Whether it be looking at some of our website forums and documents and audit, make sure that we're using gender neutral, uh. Type of language, uh, ensuring that it's inclusive, uh, we had the Babies of Homelessness Drive that supported the local nonprofit. Babies of homelessness, and that was an external effort as well as internal. Uh, with that, we brought in more than twenty-two hundred diapers, forty-nine packs of wipes, and six cans of formula. And then having the recruitment materials as well focus on diversity as well as, uh. For example, our recruitment materials, are we asking questions that are going to also focus on diversity and inclusion? Or the evaluation forms that we are using to evaluate our candidates, rating against that. The performance evaluation form, I've been updating that to also include. An aspect of diversity and leadership amongst your employees, and whether or not that's something as well that. An aspect of diversity and leadership amongst your employees and whether or not that's something as well that. We're reading against, and so I think those are some of the aspects in, in ways that we can do that. And have been starting to do that in, uh, June, we did a Juneteenth recognition event. It was for employees only, but it was, uh, providing strawberry sodas in honor of Juneteenth. Explaining the reason why behind it and then. As kind of a stress relief too, if you wanted to, you could paint a kindness stone and leave a positive message and, and just. Things that hopefully people will be able to gravitate towards, but providing those, uh, events throughout. So there's a lot of the administrative side of partnering with finance and referral that I've been doing to streamline doc. I meant some of the processes, making sure that we don't have. For example, two different things going on to do the exact same thing and how can we work together? I'm auditing the personnel files now to make sure that we're separating all of the documents that we're supposed to, so benefits are in one thing. And, uh, we're not having like background checks that were example in the personnel file. Uh, in addition, creating new forms to use that, uh, like separation form, so that I can capture the reason why someone is leaving. And hopefully they'll pull that out, but if not, uh, those are all, I'm trying to create metrics as much as I can, so that we can. Look back and see some of those tangibles, uh, the, uh, employee handbook. That is in draft form, but it's been updated to reflect some of the current laws and policies, and so once that's. Kind of in that final stage, I'll get that out to employees. And then the job descriptions are something that I've been focusing, especially on those that are three years or older, to make sure that we have those. Updated and that goes in tandem with the salary resurvey stuff, to make sure that it's accurate on the duties of what we're comparing against. To the market, so, uh, hopefully it also helps with records, but I added on the city website. Uh, spot for job descriptions and I don't know if Matt, it lets you go out or not, or if people wanna see it, but there's a link there if you wanted to. So the public could, if they would like, they can look for the job descriptions out there now. And then the salary survey is something that I've been working with Phil and Lindsay on. In preparation for some of the conversation coming up with the mid buy. And in addition to not just looking at the salary market. Currently, but also with that, an analysis of any compression issues that might occur. For example, you look at the project manager and the senior project manager, and what is that? Uh, difference between there as well as any internal equity issues, so if there's someone in a similarly situated position. But maybe they've been here five to years longer, ensuring that they are at their appropriate step that they should be. Recruitment has been a huge chunk of the, the work, I would say. So the positions that we fill to date has been the arborist and will eventually fill that one again. And then our court administrator just started, she's fabulous, um, our domestic violence advocate, finance specialist. Uh, we've got three police officers now, two of them lateral that just started and then, uh, part-time probationary officer. And four seasonal maintenance workers. We are currently, uh, in the, I was looking at the, basically the reason why on some of these, and so we've had. Uh, turnover with eight voluntary terminations or separations of that four month worth of retirement, two of them. Uh, jaws with better pay and two of them work their job dissatisfaction. And then the other, uh, separation was involuntary. In looking at the recruitment strategies though, to move forward and how we want to market the city, if you will. Trying to leverage more of social media and creating images that are hopefully appealing. Uh, also share a lot of the benefits that the city has, such as the hybrid work option. And I think that the city has a strong brand going for itself, so that's important to try to continue to foster and make sure that we're. Promoting all the achievements, uh, and highlighting the employees accomplishments, so that I think that shows to others. That are looking for a similar place to work, what we're doing, so. Been trying to work on, on those aspects and I've been conducting the interviews with, uh, exit reviews. And compiling that, so eventually I'll get to a point that I can put it into more data to find out trends within certain. Supervisors or departments or as an organization, so those are the three areas that they're being separated out to, but I don't have enough to show without it. Identified who said it, so not gonna do that yet. Um, moving forward in some of the. Future strategic planning, working with supervisors to look at what's the work rate, uh, to me workforce looking like. There's two departments in particular, I'm sure you're aware of, with police and public works that are very close to or being able and eligible to retire. And so that's important to think about as we look at the possible loss of job knowledge. Uh, also having succession planning in place, are we identifying our leaders now that we think would be great to grow? And what does that look like? So all of those, I think, are great areas for not just the recruiting side, but also, uh, retention, I think retention's. I will say, I think attrition is also good sometimes, but there's a, an aspect there that you don't wanna be losing to people, right? If you're, if we can provide those opportunities, then we'll try to do that. Don't think there's any questions on that one. So some of this is probably already repetitive for you, should say certified, sorry, not ratified for the, the teams or CBA, so. Please do twenty twenty four, we're good with that, and then on the, um, teams are side as well. I've worked on reinstating regular labor management meetings in an effort to hopefully continue to work on communication. And try to be proactive in some of the questions or concerns that are coming up and address those during the year versus at. Uh, potentially at negotiations or, or later, so I, I feel like, uh, the labor group has been very responsive to that. And so that's been great that we've been able to hopefully continue to work towards, um, you know, public communication, so I've appreciated that from the. The teamster side. Uh, at the beginning of this month, our lead maintenance worker worked with public works director. To identify what our business needs are and it really, uh, came down to move. Needed one lead maintenance worker instead of two, and so to help balance that out and, uh. Kind of address the needs and demands and operations. We had one of our lead maintenance workers reassigned as a maintenance worker. And so we're just through the final steps right now, finalizing MOU, uh, through bargaining of the impacts there, but. You know, I, I think all of that is important as we look at what the workload is and the, and what it has been versus what we need now. And so that's something that's, uh, currently happened and we're working on, and then as you know, we. Addressed some market concerns with the Gill, which I think was very helpful on the police side.
Is that chance, so. We, um, reworking the maintenance workers so that you just have one lead. That doesn't involve an actual person right now being reassigned from.
It does, so we had two lead workers and really two people, uh, overseeing two. Maintenance workers, if we were fully staffed and four, and so the ratio, uh, really is not what we need for the, the work. But to address that, we have bargained those impacts and so that person would be frozen still at their, their current wage, so they won't see the financial impact.
Okay.
There, uh, that was important to us, it, it really was more about making sure that we're addressing those needs there. But also as much as we can provide a little bit of that consideration.
Wondering how you're managing that, thank you.
So we met with the WCIA rep this week, uh, did our annual audit this year. We picked the park facility walkthrough, they, uh, went really well, uh, one of our leads and our, and the assistant was. Kind enough to take her through some of the parks and she thought our playgrounds were great and was very impressed with flower, uh, fountain. Thing, I know. But we've met all of the education requirements that they asked all the agencies to do, and then I can't share the. Uh, loss revenue reports, but as a summary, they look at the last five years and our actual losses were far below. The expected losses, so below is good in this case. And then the ongoing play management, most of that is, uh, property claims, so things like, uh, windshield getting hit by a rock. Because of a lawnmower or something. Those type of things. So that was my year basically in. And fifteen minutes, I don't know if you have some additional questions, uh, but thank you for allowing me to come down and. Share that.
Well, I, I don't have a question, I just wanna say, you know, so I'm thrilled with that report.
Okay.
Thank you for everything you're doing and, um. You know, you, you were, you have a wide range of things you have to deal with and it sounds like you've got a hand on each and every one of them, so just really please, thank you.
Thank you, well, it's, it's definitely helpful when you have a good leadership team as well, that's. I think very aligned with what we wanna accomplish and wants the best for the organization, so that makes my job. Very much easier as well, so. But thank, yeah. Yes.
They're important, appreciate your time and, uh, a lot of the work that you're doing here is so important, uh, one of the documents that we just as a council revised, our council. Policy manual, what's that called? Thank you, um, would it be appropriate to, I don't, I don't lay more work on you, but to run that through your specificity filter?
Um, I'd be happy to if that's what the council would, I'll leave that to your guys. Run through Phil, how about that, I'll run it through Phil and you. Yeah, thank you. Community development director. I really, I know, that's the one, um, the project manager, I feel like it's like my white whale right now, so I'm trying.
I'm happy, I guess, before that there's more interesting jobs than there were six months ago, that's for sure.
Yeah, and I changed some of the verbiage on there, uh, to include some more about what our benefits are as well as expanding some of the recruitment. To, uh, like our. The APA stuff is, um, that seems to, yeah, for some reason, it's interesting that. There's people that, there are people that are applying to the planner job, but then they actually have more construction, project management type of experience, so I'm like. Did you know there's this role, so it's, it's been kind of touch and go a little bit, but hopefully. We have an interview coming up next week.
I'm not sure I want to call Leah, she's gonna go one way color, say, what did you do, what did you get us into? She's horrible, on the other hand, I'm gonna call her and say, why didn't you retire two years earlier? So I got real with column and me. It's awesome, you too, um. We're very, very lucky and that's, thank you very much, guys, to agree, so. With that, if there's no other questions for our fine staff, we'll move upstairs, I'm gonna go to a break. See you upstairs, thank you.